That's the big thing. And I guess, okay. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Conference of Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. One item on the agenda, presentation from Dan Schim, Visit Norman regarding a proposed increase in the city's guest tax. Sir.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Council members, I appreciate you having me come talk today. So I have been here for almost nine years now, and half of that time, I feel like I've been working on trying to find a way to fund a sports commission. As you all know, in 2015, a citizens ballot passed the Norman Forward Initiative, which funded the amazing library, our park system, but also a lot of youth sports venues that we're starting to see come to fruition now, if not already completed in the next year to two. And so still looking at ways that we can create this sports commission. I'll go into reasons why we're doing that here in this presentation. So the state just came out with some new numbers. You know, the impact of travel was just really hit bottom during the pandemic. It was one of the, if not the hardest hit industry out there. And we're looking now at numbers that have almost, if not exceeded pre-pandemic 2019 levels. So you can see here in 2021 statewide, there was 10.1 billion spent in direct visitor travel spending, which was 3.2% over 2019. You see there, local tax revenue, state and local tax revenue of 748 million, $485 per household in tax revenues. At a state level, 2.6 billion in direct earnings from travel industry employees with over 96,000 jobs statewide. Tourism is the third largest, travel and tourism is the third largest industry in the state. So breaking that down, looking at just Cleveland County, spending was 359.6 million here, travel and tourism spending, with earnings of over 101 million. Just over 4,300 jobs are created through travel and tourism, with a local tax generated, generation of 12.4 million and state tax of 13.8 million. So you can see there's a tremendous impact of travel here locally. Now, these are all brand new. I had to send an updated slide deck over to Brenda today because the state just released the new numbers on those first two slides. This next slide, I like to break it down to just Norman. They have not released the data on 2021. They do it by districts, so Districts 44, 45, 46. So these numbers are from calendar year 2020. We anticipate these being higher, just like Cleveland County's numbers were. But in 2020, 165 million here locally with 100, or 61 million in earnings and 2,800 travel and tourism jobs, 6.2 million in local tax generated and 8 million in state tax. So with that, once again, this is those 2020 numbers. For every hundred dollars of visitor spending, it generates $11.46 in local tax revenue. And with those visitors spending here, they create $390 per household in local tax that we would have to pay otherwise and $480 in state tax revenue. So 900, almost $1,000 per household that's generated each year that we don't have to So here's our current breakdown of our guest tax. It was raised from 4% to 5%, approximately 10 years ago. Prior to that, and this is our 30th anniversary of the guest tax in Visit Norman, prior to that is 4% and had never been raised. The total projected revenue for this fiscal year was 1.65 million total. That split 50% goes to Visit Norman, to Market Norman, to these visitors that you see those economic impact numbers for previously. So 825,000 for Visit Norman. The other half is split equally, 25% each to Norman Arts Council and Norman Parks and Rec, and that was 412,500 this year. So we're proposing an increase of 3% in the guest tax to raise it from 5% to 8%. So the total projected additional revenue would be 1.05 million if we were looking at this year's numbers. And once again, timing is everything. Aaron, I saw an email today. Anthony got us a projection of the upcoming fiscal year's numbers, but I hadn't had time. That was this afternoon. And so this will be higher, but I like being conservative on these numbers. And so in looking at this year's budget, additional 3% would be 1.05 million. We're proposing a 75-25 split on this addition with 25 to arts and 75 to Visit Norman, which would fund a sports commission. The reason, and we've talked with Parks and Rec about this, the reason we're keeping that split is we have a portion of the sports commission budget would go to fund venue enhancement for the Norman Forward facilities. There was no operations and maintenance included in those Norman Forward votes, so that could be additional bleachers for tournaments. It could be lighting for more fields. It could be turf for bathrooms, whatever it is. And part of the bylaws of the proposed sports commission would include Norman Parks and Rec as a member of that advisory board, so directing us where the needs are and how those are spent. But that would keep those dollars directed to our use sports facilities there. So the reason we wanted 8%, and this is kind of small, but I wanted to visually show you guys where we are. So currently, we're at 5%. So you see right now, Norman would be down here. So we're in the bottom, third to bottom quarter currently, and this is for the state of Oklahoma. The proposed is, do I have an arrow here? I do. So the proposed 8% would put us up closer to the top on guest tax rate. Right now, Eufaula is at 9%, but the three I really pay attention to and look at, Tulsa, they're at 8.5%. They've got a 5% guest tax rate, but then additionally, they have a 3.5% tourism improvement district. And so that's a hotel assessed fee that goes on visitor's bills. And so that puts them at an all-in rate of 8.5%. We also look at Oklahoma City. They're at 5.5%. We've always been a half percent behind them. I've talked to my counterpart up there, and he's not ready to push forward and lead the charge on a guest tax increase. But if we did it, he has kind of said they'll jump in and follow suit. And I would guess they would go the half percent higher than us like they have previously. And then Stillwater, our other university town, our cousin up there, is at, just recently, over the last year, did a guest tax increase with the voters to 7%. So they have always been 1% behind us in the past two. So when we were 5%, they were 4%. So they've moved up. This is something that travelers, visitors are used to, and I'll show you other communities here in the next slide, but they're used to paying these assessments. And what's great about this is it's a visitor tax. It's charged when you check into a hotel, pay at the hotel room on a percentage of your room bill. Only visitors pay this. If you're a citizen and show proof of Norman residency, you don't pay the guest tax. So this is truly a visitor tax. Norman citizens do not pay it, and it enhances quality of life. The venue enhancements that will be happening at the Norman Forward projects, all of our kids that are utilizing those venues will get to use those as well. All of the tournaments that people are traveling to, we're hoping to bring more of those here to Norman to keep dollars here locally, and you're not going up to Edmund and the Hive as often. And we know that's going to happen with these amazing facilities we're building. This chart on the left here is just total tax rate. So you can see here, the proposed tax would put us at 16.25. We're currently 13 point, there we are, 13.625. So this would bump us up, once again, not to the top, but closer to the top. And we feel like here in Norman, with the amenities and things that we have to offer, that that's closer to where we need to be. So that's the state of Oklahoma. And this one's pretty easy because it's all apples-to-apples comparisons.
Before you go on, do you have any insight into how, why Eufaula is at 9% or how they justified that?
I don't know. I can go do some research on it, but yeah, I haven't reached out. They don't have a big presence when I'm at statewide conferences or meetings with my colleagues. They don't have a big office anywhere. They don't even have, so yeah, I don't know if it's, is that Carlton Lake up there? And that's what I would, that's what I would guess is why it's there.
Is it tournaments and things like that that are sporadic?
Yeah. So that's a pure guess on my part, but I can find out for you.
No, that's great.
Their sales tax is also 10%.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, they're at the top of both.
Of everything.
Interesting.
So moving on, looking at, oh, I'm sorry.
On the breakdown, or the pie chart?
Yeah.
Is that new distribution based off just the three new percent?
Correct.
Or the entire?
Correct. The existing visitor tax, we would keep that 50-25-25 split, and it's just the additional 3% we're proposing, that new split, to keep that, those parks portion going towards these youth sports.
Okay, so they would continue to get 25% of 5%.
Correct.
Whatever that is.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So looking at kind of our big visitor days, we have visitors throughout the year, but we know that those six home games are always huge for us as far as hotel rates and number of visitors and everything else. So looking at the big 12 here, so this is where we currently are. We'll be here, who knows, till at least 2025, potentially earlier. But we're adding four new schools in Provo, Orlando, Cincinnati, and Houston. So I wanted to see where are they at? So once again, Norman's at 5% up here. You see Lawrence is 6%, Provo, Morgantown 6%, few of those. But you get into Texas, you've got 15% for Fort Worth and Waco. 17% is the highest in the country, guest tax rate wise, and that's in Austin as well as Houston. You see Cincinnati's 10.5%. So the other thing to keep in mind here is we're looking at these, one, 8% is still low relative to many other places. Two, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison because you look at Provo, they've got a restaurant tax and an alcohol tax that goes towards funding tourism. Lawrence and Manhattan, Kansas, both have, those Kansas schools have alcohol taxes that goes towards tourism as well. So we would never come and ask for something like that because then it's not a true visitor tax. It's something that our citizens are paying too, so.
My bad if you have it up here, but do you have like a sliding scale of like, hey, here's where we get to with 6%. Here's where we get to with 7%. Here's where we're at with 8%.
I don't have that. I can put it together for you.
Because I mean, I just think that anytime you propose this, and I know it's hard to get the message across, like, hey, this is not going to affect you in Norman. It's only going to benefit you, except it's going to affect people coming here, your family or something maybe. But it's going to be hard people, hard for people to separate a 3% tax increase on anything or adding that to something. And that's good communication and things you got to be mindful of, like, hey, you're not even paying this. This is what visitors are going to pay, and this is how you're going to benefit from it. We got to do a good communication on that if you can do it. But I'm always wanting to look at the options, like, hey, here's where we get if we just do seven and, or eight. I like to try to go for it all, but I think you have to work within reality sometimes.
Sure, absolutely. We would certainly be working to get the message out on this.
We've had problems like that lately.
I don't disagree with you. I would say that, you know, 30 years of time, we've had one increase. This will be the second. So similar to discussions on utility rates that the city has too, we haven't, like, if we did smaller incremental, it would be easier to get to that. But only having the opportunity to probably put this up to the voters once every 10 years or more, I hate to not go as high as we could. And seeing where Tulsa has gone and Stillwater and others, I think the opportunity, although I will get that sliding scale.
All about the marketing. Like I said, that's just to ease my head when I look at stuff, to be honest with you.
Absolutely. No, I agree. That's a good point.
Councilmember Torquay.
You know, the last time you guys did the raise here, were you part of the team Norman?
I was not. That happened. I've been here nine years, and that was 10 years ago. So it happened about a year before I got here.
I think there's some merit in looking at how it's, how well you guys market this because you're right. I mean, the last time they marketed this before it went for the vote 10 years ago, do you recall that they did a lot of advertising with the city and the constituents, tell them why, how this affects them?
So 10 years ago, although the older I get, that's not, doesn't seem like that long ago, the world was different. Social media was around, but it wasn't as prevalent as it was now. So there was no campaign really set up to promote this. It was all very grassroots letters to the editor, and that was about it. We've already have private donations. I legally can't spend any dollars for Visit Norman to, they're public dollars that are used to market the city, so I can't use those dollars to put a campaign together. But we have citizens that are in favor of this, that have already begun putting together money to do a campaign.
I guess, the other question on the other side of this is like the OG knee votes. Knew we had a lot of misinformation about that vote. So using social media and the dangers on the other side, the flip side of social media too, are you planning to get the word out aggressively and to counter the negative, any negative campaigning or anything negative on social media?
Absolutely. We'll get out and communicate through all of the channels, whether that's social media, and it will depend on how much money is raised privately for the campaign, but digital ads as well as the speaking tours around all the civic groups. We've already met with many of the youth sports folks, soccer and optimists and others to chat about what this means to them. And they were big proponents on Norman Forward, and I think those same folks will be strongly in favor of something like this too, knowing what it'll mean for those. And then our arts community as well is going to see a major increase in, you know, revenue that they get to decide how do they spend that to make arts in Norman better.
I think the proposed change is not out of line. I mean, if it goes to what we wanted to do and moves us forward as a city and prepares us for the SEC and to receive new people and new visitors here, I think it could be a great idea if presented properly.
Yeah. Well, and I will show you guys, next slide, I'll go into kind of what we proposed to spend this on and why I think it's a good idea.
Member Shu.
Sorry, I'm back another slide again, but I didn't notice more on this list anywhere. Do you know what their?
They don't have a visitor tax.
They have hotels?
I don't know.
They have 400-ish hotels. Yeah, they don't have a.
400 beds?
400 rooms. Yeah, sorry.
I was like, 400 hotels?
Not 400 hotels, yeah. We have just over 3,000 rooms here in Norman. They've got 400-something rooms there. They don't have a destination marketing organization and no guest tax. They leave that to Deidre and their retail marketing folks. So I think that more strategy as far as tourism goes is to kind of get overflow from us.
That was going to be my question.
The SEC thinking of both ends.
Yeah. So when the market compresses here, they get to take advantage of that.
Okay, just curious. Thanks.
Yeah, so the other one, we're moving into the SEC. And so I wanted to take a look at where we are here. And so you see as low as 2% and 3% here in Mississippi, but once again, not apples-to-apples because they've got this restaurant tax that not only visitors pay, but also their locals. And so if we were looking at revenue from restaurants, we could absolutely decrease our visitor tax to generate more revenue with a smaller restaurant tax, but then our citizens pay that. So I don't like that model for us, but it does generate more, allows them to do a lower guest tax rate. You see here, 13% in Auburn, Tuscaloosa has 15%, Knoxville's 8. So 5% would still put us towards the bottom.
So Athens, if I'm reading that right, it's 7% and then an additional $5 per room?
Correct. They have a statewide guest tax. That's, so the 7% is local visitor tax dollars, and then it's $5 per room that goes towards the state.
Okay, interesting.
And you see there, probably 30% of them have this restaurant tax here with also 15% alcohol tax in those places.
35% tax.
Right. It is, it is high.
That's amazing.
10.5% guest tax rate. And she was commiserating with me, I think their annual budget was nine-plus million, and they were the lowest of their comp set that they looked at. Now, it's closer to Tulsa there. You see with the population of 310,000, so it's larger than us for sure, but they are nine times the revenue for their destination marketing organization that we are. So that's what we're competing against. They're bigger than we are, but still, they're putting more resources out there to go attract these visitors. It's competitive, and we know what Norman has to offer. We just need to get the word out. So I'll move on to how we are proposing this is spent. So with Norman Forward, as I talked about at the beginning, we're going to have some of the best facilities within this region. Well, I'll put up the YFAC against just about anything out there, and with Trey Young's name associated with it, people are going to be knocking down the doors. 22 soccer fields out at Griffin is bigger than just about anywhere, certainly in the region, but around the country, it is going to hold its own. And then our 14 Diamonds as well. All of those are tournament-quality anchor facilities that we can bring national events to. Now, we do know these are paid for by our citizens, and our local rec leagues are going to use them, and they're used for other things. And so we're not proposing that we fill them up with tournaments every weekend, but we'll work with the operators to bring in what we can in the open windows that are out there. And so the organizational structure of the Norman Sports Commission, it would be a, under the umbrella of Visit Norman, so we could scale efficiencies and share staffing, share our insurance policies and other things just to, and share office space and what we've got there. But it would be governed by a separate board that would create the budgets and everything else and send that to the Visit Norman Board for final approval.
Mr. Manager, do we have to constitute that, or can it just rise up out of the dirt? That is a good question.
Actual sports commission? I mean, I think we have a contract with Visit Norman, I think allows them to create committees and subcommittees, and it may need some updating in conjunction with this request to make sure sports funds get allocated to the state.
So employees would still be Visit Norman employees. Internally, that's all Visit Norman under the umbrella. Externally, to the rights holders of the events, to the event organizers, it's going to be the Norman Sports Commission. So it'll have its own landing page within our website, normansports.org, I believe is what it is. And so it will be branded as a standalone entity, but it will be a Visit Norman.
So under your 501(c)(3) tax return, that's where those revenues and expenditures will be recorded?
Correct, correct.
Councilmember Pegg.
You mentioned it would have a board of directors. So I assume it would have an executive director as well?
No, so it'll have, it'll have, I don't know if board of directors is the right term. It'll have an advisory committee or whatever, whatever we have to, it will, we'll have this advisory committee that here's your portion of the funding from this 3%. You guys tell us how to spend it. It'll be made up of our Parks and Rec, the operators of the sports venues, a hotel or two, and then their recommendations. They'll have a person on the Visit Norman Committee. Our youth sports guy right now is Steve Gillis, who will serve on both. And then the Visit Norman Board, because it's under that umbrella, will have to make the final approval of anything we submit to council for budgets and those things. But for the day-to-day operations and those things, this advisory committee will act kind of as a pseudo-board. My proposal now is we have a sales manager who has sports and a variety of other market segments that he's out doing. He's been, because we've known these Norman Forward venues are coming online, he has been prepped for the director role. So it'll be a director of the sports commission. But the good thing also about being under the Visit Norman umbrella, we won't have a separate executive director and other things. So he'll kind of move over, give up his other duties of market segments and things and focus solely on sports. We'll look at hiring an additional, at least, person or two. One, we call the backpack person, who will work on creating our own events, so they're not out having to compete to bring in all these tournaments. We will own them, and they'll, we know they'll be coming each and every year, whether it's a half marathon, triathlons, dragon boat races, whatever. And they'll also then help these event organizers and tournaments outside the lines. The tournament organizers do all the inside-the-line stuff. This person would be helping with, hey, we need some extra golf carts and help us get the paramedics and ambulances needed, and we need shuttles to and from the airport for whatever that is outside the lines, this person would be able to help with.
Perfect. That answers my question because I thought it might be you. I thought you were going to be the person that actually would be the director, quote unquote.
So there'll be a director. I will certainly help and be involved with it intimately, but Trent's right now will be transitioning.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Shu.
So along this, I guess, same line, can you explain to us how the current board of Visit Norman is selected, and then how might this new advisory committee also be selected? Like, what is the mechanism for that? And I'm thinking the way that you've explained it, it kind of sounds similar to the way that we have boards and commissions that are under council, advisory to council, and then we ultimately take those recommendations and vote and move forward on projects. So I'm thinking that that's how you're proposing it, but just wondering how the current board is selected, and then how might these other individuals be selected?
So the Visit Norman bylaws call out how our board is composed. And so we've got quite a few positions. There are 15 board members currently and four ex-officios. We have a few at-large positions. We have a representative appointed by the city manager. We have a representative from the Norman Arts Council's board. We have two appointed by the mayor. One is, has to be youth sports focused. That's our Steve Gillis with NYSA. One is OU focused, and that's Helen Green right now, who does events and other things at OU. We have a number of hoteliers, attractions, restaurants. We also try at those at-large committees to make sure we're representing, you know, we have Camps Corner downtown represented, is there a Lindsey Street? So we try and do that. But a majority of those positions are called out in the bylaws of who they have to be. It's three, three-year terms max on those. And then those few ex-officios, we have an appointed council member ex officio. That's Helen right now. NEDC and the Chamber are both ex officios, and there's one other that's escaping me. We have a fourth ex officio. So that's how it is. So this advisory committee, we would have youth sports, who is Steve Gillis right now, be a representative there, and most likely, the chair would sit on that. This is all to be determined because the guest tax hasn't passed yet, but this is kind of how I envision it. So those two members then are on this advisory committee that is mostly made up then of our sports. of our sports folks.
So you will update the Visit Norman bylaws to explicitly, I guess, mark, shape out what that is going to look like and how the structure is and kind of all of that?
Absolutely. The board would vote to approve any changes to the bylaws that call out how that would be governed. But we've talked about it at a board level. They're, they're good in concept with it, um, but until, until the, the, uh, visitor tax is passed, we don't want to change bylaws for something that, um, may or may not happen.
Um, so I'm just thinking too, um, so council's oversight is really on, um, your budget and the way that you spend things, so that all of that still comes through council to approve.
Correct.
Um, so it'll flow up from this advisory committee up through your board and then ultimately to council. Just thinking about overall oversight, so that citizens understand, like, there are multiple layers to how this is going to have to get vetted.
Absolutely. So, um, first and foremost, um, the board oversees everything. We, uh, we have audits that they, they see each year. They approve budgets, uh, any expenditures or requests that are, are different than what is budgeted, they're, they're approving and, and looking at. Um, and, and that is made up of, you know, we have council members and, um, Brenda is our, uh, city manager's appointment right now. The mayor appoints us. So that oversight comes from, down from council already that's on the board. Additionally, we submit a semi-annual and annual report to council. Future reports, if this were to pass and the Sports Commission is created, would include, uh, just like anything else that Visit Norman does, this would be included in the report. Now we'll, we'll create metrics that, uh, uh, are different than what we're currently doing that will, you know, my, uh, my team will love new charts and, and spreadsheets and things. So we'll create all of that. And then of course, the budget, um, would come through. It will be a, its own separate segment of Sports Commission within the line item budget. You guys see our line item by line item budgets. So it's, uh, you get that each year and, and get to approve it. In fact, we're, we're beginning to work on that right now and we'll submit it in March.
Um, and then you, probably going to talk a little bit more as you go down this, but you did allude to the fact that, um, the Sports Commission and I guess attracting more kind of larger events to our facilities, um, won't supplant the youth rec leagues and existing opportunities for Norman residents. I think that that's going to be a big conversation because Norman Forward is supposed to be a quality of life, you know, project for our, our residents and citizens. And so just making sure that we're striking a balance between this outside
Absolutely.
... to what is available for our current residents.
Certainly. Yes. So I won't have any control over scheduling of the venues. We'll work closely and that's why, one of the reasons we'll want all of the venue operators, uh, on this advisory board working closely with us on it. Uh, so we'll ask them, like we do with NYSA now, where are our open windows to bring in tournaments and events? Um, for example, uh, this coming summer, we've got BEEP Baseball, which is the blind baseball, international blind baseball tournament, uh, an amazing event. Um, it's utilizing the fields, but we have to work between, you know, existing rec leagues and growing seasons of grass and any other tournaments they might have. So we're very cognizant of that and it's not going to be every weekend, there, there's a tournament and we're, we're displacing our, my kids play in, uh, all of these leagues too. And so we're very cognizant of that and it will give the, the local teams though, the opportunity to play in tournaments where they're not having to travel. Uh, so, so that will help. And then the other thing I'll, I'll point out is we don't have the hotel space to have a tournament at every venue or every location every weekend. So they're going to have to be spread out, um, and you're not going to bring anything in on OU home weekends or, or parents' weekends, right? So the, we, we look at the calendar and find those, those windows of opportunity and that's where we'll work to, to fill.
Um, and this special might be for Catherine, in terms of our contracts with the, um, I guess entities that are running our facilities, is, is there something kind of lined out in those contracts about making sure that we're utilizing them for local rec leagues and all of that? Like is there a percentage? Like, because they're the ones that are, I guess, charged with scheduling. We want to make sure that they also understand our intent for a potential Sports Commission coming in and...
So, uh, in the YFAC operator agreement, it's not finalized yet. We're still working through that, that there is some language about some priority groups. In each of our operator agreements, agreements, we have, uh, booking policies as well that, that we are checking to make sure align with the local use of these facilities as well as tournament use.
Great. Thank you.
All right. So I'll go through this, uh, quickly and leave time for more questions, but, uh, Sports Commission will work to, uh, expand communications with our CVEB stakeholders, the local media and the hospitality community, just talking about the importance of sports. We always knew youth sports were recession-proof. Parents are going to, uh, cut back on new clothes for them, uh, before they take their kids out of something. We found out in 2020, they're also pandemic-proof. The little bit of hotel occupancy that we had was coming from youth sports and these soccer tournaments and things that were being held still. So, um, parents are not taking their kids out of these things, uh, and so it, it is growing tremendously. Uh, we're going to broadcast success with press releases, social media, other traditional media outlets and, uh, uh, really work on messaging of the economic impact. Uh, we saw that first slide that we had, uh, we're going to do more of that and this will enable us to not only do it for the Sports Commission, but shift some of the dollars we're currently spending on sports under the Sports Commission, which frees up more dollars for Visit Norman to, to do things like this as well. So, um, and then creating educational forums outlining, uh, the importance of sports and, uh, how we can utilize our local folks that may have ties to, uh, some of these other, uh, types of events that we can get them to bring them here. Targeted national outreach, this is, uh, uh, trade shows and other things where, uh, our team goes and meets with the rights holders and organizers to bring BEEP Baseball and, and other events, the Mickey Mantle World Series, other things here. Uh, local engagement, so we want to expand our partnerships with OU. As we were making this move to, uh, the SEC, the partnerships we've had with OU have only been strengthened and they have tremendous facilities that can, uh, collaborate, tie right in with what we've got at Norman Forward. Um, events, so this is that backpack person creating our own events. And then you see the venue enhancement down there as well, uh, so upgrading the facilities, uh, that we have. Last slide that I want to show you is the econo, estimated Norman Forward economic impact. Uh, so Huddleup Group did this for us. Uh, it is, uh, very conservative. It was done, uh, a couple of years ago. We looked at typically a well-run facility that, um, is, is bidding on things. You look at a 75% uh, catch rate or 25% slippage rate where they, they lose out on about 25% of what they're, they're going after. We flipped that to a 25% uh, catch rate, 75% slippage rate. One, we wanted to be conservative. Two, we just don't know what the windows are of what we'll be able to, uh, fill. And then we used a $78 a night room rate for these numbers. Uh, this year we're running at $100 for our average daily rate. So this is, uh, this is all, uh, pretty conservative, but total, uh, annual economic impact, 65.2 million spent with 8.9 million in, uh, total tax collected, over 74,000 room nights and you see 122,000 visitors. These truly are regional gems that, uh, places around us do not have. 22 fields with 12 or 14 diamonds and eight basketball courts with Trey Young's face plastered everywhere. So, um, so we're excited about this. We think it's a tremendous opportunity.
Um, those final numbers, is that based on the 8% or on our 5%?
That is based on 5% too. So that tax collected would go up slightly, um, 3% on guest tax. It, it wouldn't be a, a significant change though.
Um, okay.
It was, it was based on the, uh, the assumption that we would have a Sports Commission to bring these things in.
Okay. Um, maybe you can tell us, we've talked a lot about, you know, other, where other cities are with sales tax and different things, but how, how many other cities have sports commissions that have created them to work on initiatives like this?
Yeah. So these are, these are very common, um, and I should have put this in there. I don't want to quote the numbers, um, off the top of my head, but there are thousands of sports commissions around the country.
Are there any in Oklahoma?
Yes. Tulsa has a Sports Commission. Oklahoma City is working on recreating theirs. The All Sports Commission was theirs and now they're working on revamping that and doing it. So the, the two, and if we get this in place, three largest cities in the state have these Sports Commissions set up. And Tulsa's has been wildly successful. Uh, they bring in fast tournaments. They just attracted recently the BMX, International BMX headquarters to come there because of facilities that they have. So, um, it's a, it's big business and, um, it, it's only growing.
Makes sense.
Other questions for Mr. Scham? Yes, sir.
More so for parks and arts. Is this new distribution something both of you are in support of?
I'm in support of whatever. It's something that I think would help us as a parks attract things that would help bring tax income to the city. I believe that, you know, we're going to have some animals with Griffin and Young Family Athletic Center that's going to be there. And you have 600 hotel rooms within walking distance of the Young Family Athletic Center. And, uh, we got Reese Park with a new operator that's, uh, in the Optimus Club that's chomping at the bit to bring in the weekend tournaments and also serve our local, uh, youth sports. So again, I think this is something that would be very beneficial, trying to get us here along with serving our youth as already, because you have to remember if we do a, some kind of upgrade to a Norman Forward facility, not only because of the tax income coming to our city, that does not only benefit the people coming in, but it benefits our own youth that are here and play here.
Okay. Thanks.
So Dan King had made this presentation to the NAC Board on Friday and, uh, we didn't take any, um, specific action at that point because we also have to take it to the Arts and Humanities Roundtable and they'll meet in early February. And then that body is an advisory body to the Norman Arts Council. They'll make a recommendation to the Arts Council to take an official stance to be in support of this, but I can say unofficially, yes, the Arts would definitely be in support of this. And if, since I'm talking, if I could just make one other point, because there was a question earlier about, um, getting the vote passed. Just a little bit of history, when this first happened, when the hotel tax first came up in 1980, um, it passed by just a little over 50%. When we did the increase, um, about 10 years ago, it passed by over 70%. Um, and so I think that the work of Visit Norman and the parks and the arts, kind of, I think they have started to speak for themselves and seeing people understand the importance of these funds to, uh, these entities and how they give back to the community.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. This might blow some of y'all's mind, but why not go for broke on this? If it, if we can do a good enough education, say, hey, you're not paying this. Well, what if my family comes to town? You can always rent the hotel rooms yourself and save on it, but if you look at it, if you go from a hundred dollar hotel room and somebody, they're not going to not come to Norman if they're taxed to 8% or whatever. And if you're just using basic math on that, it's $108. Why not be at 10%? They're not going to say, oh, it was two more dollars. I'm, I'm going to more. So why not add it at 10% if we think we can get that passed? Because if you explain to everybody, you're not paying this, everybody coming here is paying this, we're going to have things here that they're going to come here regardless, they're going to fill up the hotel rooms. So why not maximize this and still seem decent compared to some of these other rates?
I'll answer that for you. Um, we have to have the support of our hotels with this also. And although I agree with you that you, if someone coming to visit, when's the last time anyone looked at what the, the guest tax rate was to decide not to book a hotel room? Our hotels don't necessarily like the idea of being the highest rate in the state when they're competing with Oklahoma City and Tulsa for conferences and conventions.
Who in the world knows that? What, who, what normal person has ever looked up that data ever unless we just show it in their face all the time and say, hey, just like you're reminding you, Norman has the highest room rates in the state. Not one person has ever been, I've never, I've never even thought of that till now.
Leisure travelers do not, but you do get some meeting planners that do conferences and convince that look at it and, um, if, if our hotels opposed it, it would certainly make it much harder to, uh, to pass. We, we want to make sure that our partners at the hotels are in favor of it.
Fair enough.
We've talked with them.
Thank you.
Quite a bit.
One more.
Yes.
Um, what is the, so this has to go to a vote of the people. Are we looking at, I know we're always looking at dates on when this could come forward. Is there a suggestion?
They were hoping for May, which would put it first and second reading in February to hit a May ballot, so.
Okay. And we won't know from the Arts Council until after their meeting. Will that still work with that timeline?
Your first reading for February would be the 14th, so.
The board is the 17th.
So we would know by second reading, which is when we'll officially vote on it. Thanks.
So we'll be potentially voting every month for the first six months of the year.
We gotta take a break for summer.
Yeah.
Anything more?
So that's council's desire. We just need to know to prepare the ordinance.
Direction, what's your pleasure? Do you want Dan to go ahead with this?
Yep.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Stands by. Clear direction. We appreciate it, sir.
Thank you all. Sure. Good luck, Dan. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, guys.
I'm sorry.
Can you say some words?
Yeah.
Good evening, and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of January 24, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Here.
Councilmember Mormon?
Absent.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
And Mayor Heickel?
I'm here.
Group 233, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? If the rest of us will stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council announcements. Councilmember Schuler?
No announcements.
Councilmember Lynn?
There's elections around the corner, and one of the big ones is the school bond coming up. We need to get that thing done and make, make Norman the epicenter of aerospace engineering and just a futuristic city that we can't even imagine right now. If we get this done, there's all kinds of great stuff that's going to go for it. So I hope everybody out there can get behind it and support it for the good of the kids and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant?
Yes. First, I would like to highlight the efforts of private citizens, human rights commissioners, and city staff that facilitated the Martin Luther King Interfaith Breakfast last week. It was my first time to attend. I enjoyed all aspects of the event, particularly keynote speaker, Mr. Melvin Hall Esquire dropping this bit of wisdom from the late, great Dr. King. "Nothing in the world is more dangerous than sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity," which Mr. Hall Esquire rephrased as really believing in what you don't know and knowing you're talking nonsense. More or less, I'm paraphrasing what he said, but I will be carrying that observation with me into 2023. Second, I'd like to highlight the work Norman Caravans is doing tonight, pulling people out of the cold and getting them into shelter. You can donate to them, look them up on Facebook or Instagram. That's Norman Caravans. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tortorello?
No announcements.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I also want to encourage everybody to get out and read up about the school bond and make an informed vote. I will be voting to support it. I'm a product of Norman Public Schools. I'm a big believer in public schools, and I think this is needed and will do a lot of good at all of the public school sites in Norman. So definitely, again, read up on that. Feel free to ask us any questions if we can help, help you make an informed vote. And also want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting the City Council Candidate Forum last Thursday. I appreciate them doing that every year and helping make sure everybody in Norman is well-informed about the people running for office. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peacock?
Vote yes for kids on February 14th.
None from the mayor. All right. Next item is consent docket. These items are placed on the agenda so the City Council can, by unanimous consent, can designate these routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item must be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that items 1 through 17 be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion to place items 1 through 17 on the consent docket.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to place items 1 through 17 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you can, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to place items 1 through 17 passes, on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent docket. I have a motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Hearing none. The motion on the, approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have, our votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you all. Items on non-consent, starting with item number 18. Resolution 222354, amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan to remove property located on the west side of Claussen Boulevard, north of East Constitution Street, from the commercial designation and place it in the high-density residential designation, except those areas that will remain designated in the, as flood plain. Excuse me. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there a representative for the applicant to make a presentation?
There is. Thank you, Mayor. Sean Rieger representing the applicant here tonight. Thank you. Let me get my stuff here. Make sure I don't tear anything up. There we go. All right. Thank you. This is a student housing project we're talking about tonight in Ward 7, Steven Tyler Holman's Ward. And I think I would press for this by saying, you've heard a lot about the SEC and how much OU is going to grow in the next coming years. We went through this, Councilman Holman and I were talking about this, and we went through this maybe 10 or 15 years ago in Norman, where a lot of these student housing projects got built down in this sort of southeastern quadrant. And there's been many years since many of those got built. I think Callaway House may have been one of the last ones. Well, I think you may see some of these coming again, and that's what this project is tonight. And I remember when we did these 10 or 15 years ago in the slew of them, a discussion that really came to being, I think, was as OU grows, and obviously they're about to grow by thousands of students, we believe, we can either find facilities to put these students in, like you're going to see tonight, or if we don't, those students are going to rent into the neighborhoods where we have typically problems. And Ms. Hudson's department gets calls about code compliance and things like that. So typically, it's beneficial to have the students into projects like this. That's what this project will provide. And let me take you through it to show you what it entails. So the subject property is right over there on Claussen. You see it kind of outlined in yellow. OU is everything in red. So this is across the railroad tracks from the Jimmy Austin Golf Course down on Claussen, just where Claussen and 12th Street intersect. And many of you will know it as basically the OU Motel. That's the site and a couple other sites right next to it. So a little closer look at this. There is the site outlined in yellow right there. I thought this would be good to show you that this is right in the bull's eye of many student housing projects. You see them on the screen there on the upper left is the flats. Then there's the edge just north of this project, Saratoga Springs, right across the street. And then ones that just got built sort of in that area, I was talking about the Collective. It used to be called Aspen Heights. It's now called the Collective. And then just south of that is Alight Norman. And then there's one over south of the golf course called the 2900. All of those basically are student housing projects. Some of them very much tailored exactly to student housing projects, other ones typical apartment complexes.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of January 24th, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Here.
Councilmember Mormon? Absent. Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
And Mayor Heikle?
I'm here. Group 233, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance if the rest of us will stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council announcements. Councilmember Schuler?
No announcements.
Councilmember Lynn?
There's elections around the corner, and one of the big ones is the school bond coming up. We need to get that thing done and make Norman the epicenter of aerospace engineering and just a futuristic city that we can't even imagine right now. If we get this done, there's all kinds of great stuff that's going to go forward. So I hope everybody out there can get behind it and support it for the good of the kids and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant?
Yes. First, I would like to highlight the efforts of private citizens, human rights commissioners, and city staff that facilitated the Martin Luther King Interfaith Breakfast last week. It was my first time to attend. I enjoyed all aspects of the event, particularly keynote speaker, Mr. Melvin Hall Esquire dropping this bit of wisdom from the late, great Dr. King. Nothing in the world is more dangerous than sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity, which Mr. Hall Esquire rephrased as really believing in what you don't know and knowing you're talking nonsense. More or less, I'm paraphrasing what he said, but I will be carrying that observation with me into 2023. Second, I'd like to highlight the work Norman Caravans is doing tonight, pulling people out of the cold and getting them into shelter. You can donate to them, look them up on Facebook or Instagram. That's Norman Caravans, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tortorello?
No announcements.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I also want to encourage everybody to get out and read up about the school bond and make an informed vote. I will be voting to support it. I am a product of Norman Public Schools. I'm a big believer in public schools, and I think this is needed and will do a lot of good at all of the public school sites in Norman. So definitely, again, read up on that. Feel free to ask us any questions if we can help you make an informed vote. And also, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting the City Council Candidate Forum last Thursday. I appreciate them doing that every year and helping make sure everybody in Norman is well-informed about the people running for office. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peacock?
Vote yes for kids on February 14th.
None from the mayor. All right. Next item is consent docket. These items are placed on the agenda so the City Council can, by unanimous consent, can designate these routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item must be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that items 1 through 17 be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion to place items 1 through 17 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to place items 1 through 17 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been cast, and the motion to place items 1 through 17 passes, on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent docket. I have a motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Hearing none. The motion on the... ...to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you all. Items on non-consent, starting with item number 18. Resolution 222354, amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan to remove property located on the west side of Classen Boulevard, north of East Constitution Street, from the commercial designation and place it in the high-density residential designation, except those areas that will remain designated as floodplain. Excuse me. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there a representative for the applicant to make a presentation?
There is. Thank you, Mayor. Sean Rieger representing the applicant here tonight. Thank you. Let me get my stuff here. I'm sure I don't turn anything up. There we go. All right. Thank you. This is a student housing project we're talking about tonight in Ward 7, Steven Tyler Holman's Ward. And I think I would press for this by saying you've heard a lot about the SEC and how much OU is going to grow in the next coming years. We went through this, Councilmember Holman and I were talking about this, and we went through this maybe 10 or 15 years ago in Norman where a lot of these student housing projects got built down in this southeastern quadrant. And there's been many years since many of those got built. I think Callaway House may have been one of the last ones. Well, I think you may see some of these coming again, and that's what this project is tonight. And I remember when we did these 10 or 15 years ago in the slew of them, a discussion that really came to being, I think, was as OU grows, and obviously they're about to grow by thousands of students, we believe, we can either find facilities to put these students in, like you're going to see tonight, or if we don't, those students are going to rent into the neighborhoods where we have typically problems. And Ms. Hudson's department gets calls about code compliance and things like that. So typically, it's beneficial to have the students into projects like this. That's what this project will provide. And let me take you through it to show you what it entails. So the subject property is right over there on Classen. You see it kind of outlined in yellow. OU is everything in red. So this is across the railroad tracks from the Jimmy Austin Golf Course down on Classen, just where Classen and 12th Street intersect. And many of you will know it as basically the OU Motel. That's the site and a couple other sites right next to it. So a little closer look at this. There is the site outlined in yellow right there. I thought this would be good to show you that this is right in the bullseye of many student housing projects. You see them on the screen there on the upper left is the flats. Then there's the edge just north of this project, Saratoga Springs, right across the street. And then ones that just got built sort of in that area, I was talking about the Collective. It used to be called Aspen Heights. It's now called the Collective. And then just south of that is Alight Norman. And then there's one over south of the golf course called the 2900. All of those basically are student housing projects. Some of them very much tailored exactly to student housing projects, other ones typical apartment complexes. But we are right in the middle of very much a student housing area, and so it's very fitting that this would go there as an infill project. The existing 2025 is very intense. The red is commercial, so 2025 says this site can be anything commercial. I think the day has probably left this site to be commercial, as commercial now is less retail and less oriented of that kind. The commercial that is right around this has struggled, and so this is really probably an appropriate use to change it to high-density residential, which is what those brown zones are right next to it, on the east side of it and north of it a little ways. So the change is to go to high-density residential and leaving the open space designation on the south. The proposed zoning change is to PUD, Planned Unit Development. And again, this current zoning is really C2-intense, commercial zoning. You see RM6 across the street. C2 surrounds this with OU Golf Course to the west. It's really an infill project that we've described it as that, and I think it is infill, of course, bringing something to a new, higher, and best use than it has been. You can see this is completely surrounded by utilities, sewer water, and significant number of uses that have been here for a long time. So it's a good infill project, and you see all of these student housing. You see all of those cottages across the street and apartments up to the north, right in the middle of all of that. This is the site plan, and I'll show you some imagery next, but it is about a five-story building with sort of a half basement, 210,000 square foot building. There's about 12,000 square feet of common area, leasing space, fitness amenities, things like that. It's what we call a donut concept. In the middle is a courtyard and open space, not a donut concept in the sense of structured parking. The parking is surface parking on this one around it, but about a five-story building. You can see on the north end of this, there is subgrade detention. So under the parking lot, we're utilizing detention. And then there is a cell tower on the north end, right here. That's an existing cell tower. We've made sure that the building is over 200 feet away from that cell tower. That's per ordinance that we have to separate by 200 feet. We've accommodated that. The traffic, we have left-turn lanes that we're going to paint and provide into this site. They are not there now, but the street is wide enough, to my understanding, that we can just simply do it by striping. So we will have dedicated left-turn lanes into this site. And then the main entry to this building is right here. So as you come off Classen and 12th intersection over here, then you come up here, and the main entry is right here where there is door dash drop-off, there is bike park, bike parking, scooter parking, drop-off space, all of that right there with the leasing on that corner. So the main entry point will be off that corner. Then there will be a dedicated walkway lane from that common area, the main entry place, across the parking lot down to what we're basically going to utilize as the floodplain area, as a passive amenity area. So there is a, the first part of it will be probably a dog park and some courts right by the parking lot. But then, as you go farther down, it will be trails, a small walking trail, fitness, hammocks, frisbee golf, something of that nature, where we can preserve the trees and utilize them in a positive manner for these residents to go down and enjoy that shade. So that kind of summarizes the site. Let me show you. Green space, again, the entire southern end of the site is preserved for green space. Some of it will be compensatory floodplain storage because we are pushing the building parking out into floodplain. This has been approved by the floodplain committee, and now this just goes before you in terms of the zoning and open space. But 42% of this site will be left as green. And one thing I wanted to talk to you about or just show you in imagery, this was something that Councilmember Holman and I have talked about. There is an oddity here in that if you remember Norman from long ago, Classen used to go straight down. It got changed at one point to curve over to 12th. Well, that is the old Classen. You can see it right there, surrounded in yellow dash. That's how Classen used to extend. Long ago, it was changed, and that street was basically abandoned. It's just a dead street there. We've been asked to remove that concrete, that impervious surface, and we're happy to do that. So as part of this project, we will remove all of that pavement and return that to natural landscape so that we can have some more pervious ground in that area. We'll need your permission, and whatever we need to do to do that, we'll work with the city attorney's office to make sure we can do that. So what will it look like? This is the very preliminary. I always caution you, please, very preliminary imagery, but likely this is what it would look like as you're coming up Classen from the neighborhood Walmart area, a five-story building. And this, again, is the leasing space off the main corner with the drop-off space, door dash, bike space, amenities, all across this front. And then the parking would be off to the left and around the back. Preliminary plat is very simple. It's a one-lot development. You can see the underground detention space right up here and just one large lot, so not multiple lots in this situation. That's the extent of it. It's very simple. The summary of it is we're amending 2025 to go from commercial and floodplain to high-density residential and floodplain. We're rezoning to a PUD that seeks the apartment building uses and the amenities, maximum of five stories, maximum of 650 beds, preliminary plat, one lot, 9.6 acres. Staff report has been very complimentary, and we appreciate that. This says this proposal will not create an adverse land use for the surrounding properties. This development is similar in nature and intensity to the surrounding area. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for the verve, and transportation report recommends approval. A planning commission gave us approval. They did comment on the billboard, and we made changes to that to deal with much more restrictions on the digital billboard. No neighbors attended predevelopment. I don't recall that we had any speak at planning commission either, and there are no protests that we're aware of. With that, happy to answer any questions you have. We have the whole team here tonight with us, and we thank you very much for your consideration.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I have a couple questions.
Yes.
For one, for the city manager. We talked about the removal of the pervious surface on the city property.
Correct.
Is that something that the city is ready to, willing to agree to?
Oh, absolutely. We think that'd be a...
Just for the record.
Plus, once demolition contractors are already in sight, to have them mobilize and have all the old blacktop remnants removed, it'd be good for the site, it'd be good for the visual, better for percolation to remove some no-longer-needed impervious surface. So looking forward to that happening.
Thank you. And the plan would just be restoring it back to natural?
Correct.
Field, basically.
Yep.
Floodplain area. Okay. And then I do have a question about a little bit of the traffic, Classen Boulevard right there. And you talked about adding the left-turn lanes into...
Right.
But right there at the curve is where Classen transitions from a four-lane street down to a three-lane street, and then further north, it goes back to four lanes again. So are you, you're not anticipating, and might be a question for our city staff too, anticipating having to make any additions or alterations to the street there?
It is not in our plan of work to do that. I don't believe, I don't know if staff or Mr. Reese Land has anything to add. Our plan of work is to put in left-turn striping.
Currently, two lanes going south and one lane going north at that, where it curves, right in front of the existing OU Motel. So I wasn't sure if that was...
And there is a project out there, you know, on the horizon to make sure it's four lanes all the way. This wouldn't impact that at all.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Don. And then the last one is regarding the current occupants. What would be the, if this were to be approved tonight, what would be the, I guess, estimated timeline for this project moving forward and the current occupants of the OU Motel? How would that work out?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember. I did ask the applicant on this, and it was a good response. What I've learned is that they actually have already been working with these occupants towards that. In fact, any that were already, that were on a monthly lease, which apparently was very few, have already been transitioned to a week-to-week lease. So they are already, there is nothing more than a week-to-week lease on that property, or I don't know if you'd even call it a lease, because it has operated as a hotel, as an extended stay hotel. So I'm understanding that management is already working on that, already advising these residents of that, and so they should be relatively easily to transition. Opening date, I believe, is 2024. Is that right? That we're looking towards?
Groundbreaking.
Yeah.
Well, groundbreaking, 2027.
Yeah. Yeah. So it'll be a ways out, but we will need them to transition away at a relatively same time period.
Okay. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Other council member? Councilmember Schuler?
I wanted to ask some questions, I think, about the green space and kind of proposed uses for that. So in, I mean, the PUD, it talks about dog parks, sports courts, fitness stations, benches, frisbee, all that kind of stuff. Is that all been approved with that floodplain from the floodplain committee? Like, those pieces are where you have to come back if you're going to install anything like that?
We can't do anything vertically, basically, that would inhibit floodwaters. As an example, fencing is a good example of that. So fencing along the edge, when we hit the floodplain, the fencing along this western edge goes to chain link, so the water can flow through it. On the north of that, it goes to stockade. So we would not do anything or propose anything that would be vertical structures that would inhibit the floodplain.
Okay. So I know, and I know you're well aware, of the streetscape plan for Constitution, which is just near this. Is there any plans in terms of, like, bike? I know you can't maybe put one through, exactly through the floodplain, but like, are there any ideas to connect this section into Constitution and kind of provide for multimodal pathways up through Constitution for that?
Yeah. Let me show you. We don't have any way to connect Constitution because we don't own the land between us and Constitution. So that is a gas station that's not of our ownership, and on the west side, it is the railroad. We did get a question about can we cross the railroad, and we were asked pretty extensively on that. The answer is just a flat no, where we have no right ability or desire or even good practice to cross the railroad. So we would have nothing to do with crossing the railroad, and we really can't get to Constitution through that adjacent property. So we will rely on the right of ways to have transportation.
Yeah. I'm just thinking about, you know, bikes, scooters, students use. And as we, you know, upgrade what Constitution is, like, there's a whole planned multimodal pathway and all that kind of stuff. So we might be thinking strategically about how does that project connect safely up to Classen, bike lanes, and so maybe that's not something for this applicant, but I think for the city to take into account, especially as we, I would, you know, like to have less cars. And I, can you touch on the parking? So that 15% was less than what our old code used to be?
Correct. Yeah.
As I'm understanding?
That's correct. Yes. The minimum recommendation minimums that we used to have, and you changed that not long ago to where we no longer have requirements. And we appreciate that very much because, so this is showing .84 beds, .84 parking spaces per bed. That's about 15% less than what the code would require. Let me give you an example of how that is different than when we used to do it. When we did Callaway House, Councilmember Holman might remember this, that we had to actually write into the PUD a request to do a different parking count, and that was controversial at the time. I remember Councilmember Youngman questioned whether we could do that or not. We did. But this is a pretty similar account to what Callaway House has, and this time, we can do it by right because you've removed those parking maximum or minimums.
Yeah. So as we're thinking about that, it's, you know, less than one car or car space per bed. I think this just, again, emphasizes the intent that maybe not every student will have a car. And so providing access points for other modes of transportation that they can safely traverse to and from campus is the intent. I mean, many of the other apartment complexes have a shuttle that runs students. Would that be something that is similarly proposed? I, I'm sure you're not putting that in the zoning, but...
We're not, and that really decision doesn't come up until they get into leasing and figure out whether they would need that or not. But, yeah.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
To the point on transport, is it near a bus route?
It is not on one. My understanding is that there is a new route, and I'm probably not the one to comment on that, but I believe there's a new route that is going to be extended along this route. I don't know the timing or the funding of that, but that's my understanding that there is one coming.
Okay. And then will there be ADA units for students with disabilities?
I believe they are required by building code. When you have a multifamily project like this, per building code, you have to provide a certain percentage of accessible spaces. And I don't know what that percentage is, but that's by building code that you have to account for that.
And then what kind of price tag are people looking at for one of these?
We have no idea, and we never do until we get through all the construction, the financing, all of that. Projects like this, these are, that's a moving target from interest rates to construction materials, all of that. They price it to be in the market, and we wouldn't have any idea what that would be yet.
So no affordable housing aspects whatsoever?
I can't say. I don't know. But this is a student housing project, so these would be focused on University of Oklahoma students primarily.
Of a certain income? Yes. Okay. That's all. That's what I wanted to...
Thank you.
Seeing no others, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding the item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers signed up? No speakers. Oh, I didn't need to read all that. Are there any, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I do plan to support this project. There hasn't been any public protest. Nobody in Ward 7 has reached out to me about it. But I do just want to make a note for everybody to be conscious of as we move forward with other items, that affordable housing continues to be an issue in our community, and approving this project will remove some current affordable housing in our community. So keep that in mind as we're considering other options for expanding affordable housing in Norman going forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Schuler?
Yeah. My comments were going to be similarly aligned with Councilmember Holman, but I think the, you know, the point about having housing for students that is centered and focused on students is important as we also think about our housing mix in Norman. I do remember the huge spurt of many of these housing complexes going up, and it's one of the reasons at the time where I started to focus on what the city was doing with their housing and thinking, oh, are we only focused on housing for students? And so I've learned, I've learned much since sitting in this seat and kind of seeing the larger picture. So my, you know, I can't say that this is going to open up opportunities for other members of our community to rent houses, certainly not near the campus area, I don't think. But there is a potential that, I mean, we need new beds. And so while this is not an affordable housing solution today, it is potentially, has the ability to open up some other options that are not student-focused or for other families, young professionals, young families, seniors, other individuals in our community. So let's keep an open mind as we think about what we're building, not just in affordable housing, but for other individuals in our community. So this is just a piece of that. So as we, again, think about the next item that's going to come forward, we need to be thinking more large-scale and holistically about housing in Norman.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 19, ordinance zero, two-two, two-three, one-seven, upon second and final reading, rezoning property on the west side of Classen Boulevard, north of East Constitution Street, from C2, general, commercial district, and A2, rural agricultural district, to PUD, Planned Unit Development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further comments from council? Madam Clerk, in public? No? Okay. Good. No final comments. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading as amended, which is not amended. Let's me take that out of there. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as amended. Let me... Let me read it again. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you. I tried to skip a page on that. Won't work. Item twenty, a preliminary plat for the VERV, Norman addition, a planned unit development. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and second. This is a companion item to the previous two items. Are there any further comments from council? Member Holman?
Just want to thank you for considering Norman and coming to our community, and I look forward to seeing how this project progresses and seeing how it turns out when it's finished. Thank you.
Any further? Excellent. No public comments? Okay. Are there any? No. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
All right. Nothing got amended. Now we're on carports.
Make sure we don't have that amended thing on there.
That's all right. Item twenty-one, ordinance two-two, two-three, two-zero, upon second and final reading, amending regulations related to the construction of carports. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Ms. Hudson, would you like to address this?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Let me see if I can get... to mine. Okay. So, thank you. Yes, I'm here tonight to present the regulations, the changes in the regulations for the carports. Currently, everything is located in Chapter twenty-two, and the proposal tonight is to take everything back out of Chapter twenty-two and place it in Chapter five. For those of you that are not familiar with the carport discussion, it started back in 2014. In 2020, council decided that we wanted to go ahead and move forward with some amendments. So we took it out of Chapter five and placed everything in Chapter twenty-two. We added the requirement that they should have to go to Board of Adjustment for a special exception, and when we did that, it added time and cost to the applicants that were wanting to construct their carports. In addition to that, they had design requirements that they had to meet. And just as of note here, when we changed the regulations on the carports, and like I said, having to go to Board of Adjustment, we had nine applications. Of those nine applications, only one was actually constructed, and that was in South Ridge Historic District. So they actually went forward and had additional regulations that they had to follow from So pulling this back into Chapter five, we're adding this definition that you see here for the carports, you know, all structures, whether attached to an existing structure or freestanding, which are constructed for the purpose of providing a roof-type cover-only for the protection from sun, rain, snow, sleet, or hail of passenger vehicles. One of the things, these things that we're taking out of Chapter five, the no-metal roof, the sides cannot be covered. There was a requirement within Chapter five for the size, the gauging of the supports for those carports. And then there was also a requirement that the supports could be no closer than 10 feet. So we are removing those, and with the additions back into Chapter five, carports will be allowed in any zoning district as long as they meet these standards that you guys are reviewing tonight. Of course, a building permit will still be required. They're still required to be open on all sides with the exception of where they might be attached to the single-family home. Overall coverage still has to be met, 65% for the overall lot. And again, you know, we talk about the maintenance of these structures. It is a maintenance issue, so we just need to make sure that we're, you know, watching these, and if we get complaints on them, we need to have the property owners take care of them. Again, they still have to be located over a hard surface, and there is the qualifier that if there is gravel, they can put one over it, but it has to have been maintained from July of 1966. They can't put new gravel down for the carports. And there are some areas in the court, you know, that do still utilize that gravel. The side yard setback is something that we're amending with this, if adopted. We're reducing that side yard setback requirement. Of course, you have to have an existing dwelling on the lot. The gauge of the metal for the roof is at 29. That's a requirement that we're adding. Of course, meeting the building code requirements, it shall not exceed the height of the dwelling structure, and you have to apply appropriate guttering so you're not negatively impacting your neighbors. And then they, still, this has always been in there, but they can be constructed in front of the build line, but yet no closer than seven feet from the front property line. So we're not messing with sidewalks or right-of-way or anything like that. Added a few pictures in here just to give you an idea of what we do have for our carport stock in the city right now. This will allow property owners to continue the construction of these type of carports that you're seeing here. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from council? There are none. Do we have any questions from any of the public? We have none. This is... Oh, Councilmember Schuler?
Yeah, comments?
Okay.
No questions. Just comments.
All right.
So Councilmember Grant and I worked on updating these, I guess, this ordinance and moving it from Board of Adjustments and worked closely with Jane Staff. It was something that I heard multiple times in Ward Two on the doors, why is it so hard to construct a carport? And then similarly, Councilmember Grant, also in Ward Four, it's our older parts of town, many of the houses there have a single-car garage, and many of those have been converted. So there is no garage space for our cars to be covered and protected from the elements. And with the way that the ordinance had been adopted, I think back in 2020, it made it very cost-prohibitive for a lot of our residents. So just to give you an idea of the cost to go through Board of Adjustment with the potential that you would not be allowed to construct a carport. So there was a $200 fee for the special exception. You had to get an owner list of the property owners around you, which could potentially cost you $150 to $200 to pull that list. Or if you were diligent, you could go on to the county assessor's website and pull those things yourself, but that's, you know, time-intensive. You were also required to put a legal notice ad in the paper, which would run you anywhere from $50 to $100. And then, so right there, we're talking about $400 to $500 just to go to Board of Adjustment to say, can I construct this carport? Not to mention that once they said yes, maybe, you were required, in many cases, to actually have design work done to construct something that was of wood quality, of, you know, had a pitched roof like your roofline and had, you know, roofing like your house. And so really, this came down to kind of an equity issue for me in looking at this. And we tried very hard to make sure that this was going to, as Jane talked about, a maintenance issue. So making sure that we are maintaining our carports so that they are safe, they are attached appropriately to the ground, they're not going to fly up and then potentially damage somebody else's property. So this is, these are the things that we were trying to kind of balance, is making sure that it was still affordable for people to protect their property within our community, but also making sure that it was not going to negatively impact potential other property owners. So that is why I've been in full support of updating this and allowing for some administrative oversight so that this can go just through the planning department. You come in and to be able to build your auxiliary structure, and then we, individuals can move forward with construction of their carport. So those are my comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Holman?
This issue's been lingering around City Council for as long as I've been on the council, for sure. And so multiple council members from various wards have dealt with it, have tried to make adjustments to it. So I'm hopeful that this attempt will be the one that finally gets it through and solves the issue once and for all, maybe at least for the foreseeable future, anyway. Thanks.
I hope too, as you do, that this should solve that. The whole idea is to protect your car and health, and as we sit down here with April coming up, that's a necessary thing. So any other... Councilmember Grant?
Thank you, Councilmember Schuler, for giving us the history. I'm glad I don't have to do that. But I will be supporting this because I am looking forward to creating equity. I also got those folks on the doors telling me about the carport situation, but I also got multiple emails, not only from, like, car collectors in the heart of Ward Four, but millennials and also elderly folks. There's a lady who's going to be very happy after tonight if we pass this because she's thinking about her elderly parents and their ability to protect their vehicle and to get to the grocery store and to their doctor's appointments and not have one more thing stressing them out. So I'm really looking forward to this.
Councilmember Liam?
I do apologize if I go off-topic here, but I just wanted to ask the mayor, how old are you today?
You're off-topic, Ken.
Yes, I apologize. Happy birthday. I forgot to say that earlier, and I didn't want to say it before we got out of here, whatever.
Ambushed. Anyway, the motion on the, if there's no other comments, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. I was making sure I didn't skip a step.
Our votes have been cast. Adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to reject the ordinance on, adopt the ordinance on final reading. I'll read that correctly.
So moved?
Thank you, sir. I'll, this, well, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading.
So moved?
Second.
And a second. Thank you. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Get it out there somewhere. I know. I love it.
Didn't I read it?
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Excellent. Let me answer your question, Councilmember Seventy-One. Item number twenty-two, since we're doing everything out of wet. Item number twenty-two, Contract K-222309, with CS Holding in the amount of $525,000 for the purchase of 4.85 acres located at the northeast corner of Oakhurst Avenue and Imhoff Road to be used for affordable housing. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the contract.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Anthony, Mr. Pierce, Assistant City Attorney.
Good evening. There we go. So this is going to be similar to the, I guess, the presentation given last week during study session, a brief overview of the property, the background of it, and as well, a brief glimpse at to the future project we're anticipating for this property. So this is an undeveloped piece of property on Imhoff and Oakhurst, and this, I think, is in Ward One. As you can see, it's heavily wooded. It was previously zoned for a PUD, for a 75-unit multifamily senior development project. It's about on just under five acres. The contract price is about half a million dollars, $525,000. It is outside of the 100-year flood zone. It is not in a floodplain or anything like that. I think it was reported that it was, but to clarify any confusion, it is not. It's not even close to a floodplain, so that's pretty clear. It is located in a census tract. What that means for the affordable housing opportunity that I'll get into later is that's a more desirable piece of property when we get into the affordable housing criteria for a competitive program for tax credits. And because of where this site is located, it would receive very favorable ratings in terms of the location criteria for that housing program, the tax credit program that we'll get into a little bit later. Here's a picture of the surrounding area. It's the one in the middle with the green star. That's the subject property. We have some, a lot of residential housing development, a few commercial, then a large industrial, the Hitachi plant to the south. In terms of the contract terms, there is a due diligence inspection period that's pretty lengthy, it's six months, but we have the opportunity to extend it for an additional 30 days upon request. What we're looking at whenever we get into that due diligence period is we're going to obtain a formal appraisal, so we understand better about how much the property's actually worth. The, we're going to get a property survey, knowing what the property actually is that we're buying, an environmental assessment with making sure that it's not located on any hazardous environmental conditions, and then also, any other inspections we would need to satisfy any tax credit financing requirements, a part of that federal program. And a quick note about the evaluation of the property. We have not, typically, we'll get an appraisal before we come forward with the contract price. We were approached with an offer for this property, and we did some due diligence beforehand, looking at some different comparable properties that were sold recently. And based on what we found, this was pretty much in range with what we'd expect to pay for this property. It was on the low end of our valuation. For example, similar properties sold for anywhere from $97,000 to $304,000 an acre, and this is on the low end of that, about $107,000 an acre. So once, if we, if, you know, council does want to purchase the property and wants to go forward with an affordable housing opportunity using this property, there are a couple of different plans we have in place. I think our first and most favorable plan would be using federal tax credit programs and as well state tax credit programs to finance that affordable housing opportunity. This would, okay, you have to bear with me, Lisa Craig is usually the one who's the most competent person to give this, but she's out of state this week. But the state, the federal tax credit program, it allows us to, you know, get some, you know, capital to put into the property by leveraging some federal programs. We'd have to partner with a developer, and we'd have to do an RFP process to go through that. But I think this is kind of be our first foray. But we do have, and the council has approved a contract with the De Bruylers, who are a consultant that we've used to kind of navigate us through this property and this process. The Plan B would be to partner with Norman Affordable Housing Corporation and the Norman to develop the site incrementally. And we would use current funding that we have available, which is like ARPA, home grants, et cetera, as well as, as funds, additional funds become available. And this is important to note, I think this was also asked at the last meeting, the city would not be the one managing these properties. We would probably partner with another corporation or with a developer who would actually be the one managing that property. And again, the tax credit program is a way for us to utilize tax credits to then turn into equity and capital to develop the property, meaning that we get more bang for our buck. So if, for example, if the property is a $15 million project, the tax credits would usually, if we get a 9% tax credit, that could equal 70% of the value of the program from tax credits. However, and this is another important thing to note, you know, if we... However, and this is another important thing to note, you know, if we do go forward with a tax credit program, there would be, you know, some security that this would be a future affordable housing opportunity. So, it wouldn't just be, you know, throwing out the property and hoping for the best. They would have to, depending on which program they leverage and which program we go into, they would have to agree that that property would have to be used for affordable housing from anywhere to fifteen to thirty years. So, I mean, it's a pretty secure investment in specifically affordable housing if we do that approach. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Like I said, Lisa's the tax credit, I don't think, she might not call herself the expert, but she definitely knows more than I do, but I can try to answer any questions that you guys have about the program specific.
Can I ask from council? Councilmember Schuler?
Let me start, okay. So, there were a couple of questions that I've gotten from residents about ownership of the property, moving forward, like we will purchase the land, but then those Plan A, Plan B scenarios, we, Plan A, we would partner with a developer. So, who would the city, and then we're going to plan to have a managing partner, once the housing is built, would the city retain ownership of the property, or would we be essentially moving ownership to another entity?
That's a complicated question, just because it depends on how you structure the actual program. And let's say that we, I think there are different ways we can structure it, and that is something that we would likely, you know, bring to council and discuss before we move forward. So, and that's something, again, we're going to have to kind of reach out to our consultants and, because it could impact the scoring of the project, how we move forward and like who owns versus like if it's a lease, or if it's like we, for example, convey the property with deed restrictions, requiring it to be affordable housing for a certain number of years. So, depending on, I would say, we would probably want to understand how it would impact the scoring to get the competitive tax credit, because we want the most advantageous tax credits. So, we would probably want to structure the conveyance or the ownership of the property to best, you know, put our program the best step forward when it gets scored for that nine percent tax credit.
But those are questions that come in the process later, once we're developing contracts, figuring out which pathway we want to move forward on, who the developer potentially is that we're partnering. All of that will, I guess, be decided with contracts, RFP process, all of that.
Yeah.
It's a further conversation.
Yes, and there's a lot of moving parts to that as well. Once we understand more of the specifics on how the scoring will come out, we can, you know, potentially come up to council and saying, these are our different options and how to convey or slash, you know, who we want to own the land, and how we can structure that conveyance if we do convey. And what are the potential, you know, detriment or, you know, positives to our scoring? So, and that's something that we can bring you before we get further into it, and that way we can understand as, you know, the city of Norman, what our options are in terms of that.
Yeah, so just, I really want, I guess, the public to understand that there is going to be more conversation, more opportunities for public input on how that process moves forward, what we think about retention of the city owning it, or what that looks like. So, this isn't the final discussion. This is just executing a contract to purchase the land, then also having time for that due diligence period over the next six to seven months, which is really where we would hone in on kind of our next steps for the project.
Correct.
Okay. My other question is about, there were two, kind of honing in a little bit more on these Plan A, Plan B. So, just to clarify, Plan B would be the path if we don't seek those tax credits, correctly? Correct, I mean?
I, I think we would, you know, it's more so because it's a competitive process, right? Let's say that we try a couple of times and we aren't successful in getting those tax credits. That doesn't mean we can't build affordable housing on that property. We're just going to have to do it in a different way. We might have to get more creative with the funding opportunities. We might have to try to leverage different grant opportunities in order to do that. There's definitely funds available for that. I know like we could use, I think there are different other federal program funds that we could use, but, you know, you are missing out on, for whatever reason, if we aren't successful with those. I guess, since it's a Plan B, I don't have, you know, and we don't know where we're at on that. I can't say, well, this is how we would move forward in that case. It would just be, it would look different, but it is still possible.
Sure. So, it's just in understanding that there are other avenues to building affordable housing if the tax credit route is not the one that is ultimately successful. We still have other opportunities at our disposal to make sure that this is an affordable housing project.
Correct. And the reason why Plan A involves those tax credit programs is because they're so lucrative and because they are so beneficial.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. So, the funding that we have for this is, it's already been set aside for this kind of endeavor, affordable housing, is that correct?
Correct. I think in the staff report, on the very last paragraph, I think it's already, I think it's a mix of different funding. I think ARPA, home grant, and then I think some, there's another mix of that. I don't know the specifics, but I know that this has already been set aside by council for this purpose.
We're not proposing to use general fund dollars for this, or any of our local source for it?
I think that's correct, yes.
Okay. And you said mostly from the ARPA funding, where we've set aside affordable housing, funding for affordable housing initiatives.
Yes, Your Honor, and there are, there's the ARPA allocation that the city of Norman received, and there's also home ARPA dollars that are specifically identified for affordable housing, and they come to Lisa Craig for programming in that manner.
And those dollars could only be used for this affordable housing initiatives, whatever.
Correct.
Okay. And you mentioned that we have six months of due diligence to, basically, after six months, maybe before you said, but this would come back to the city council at that point to make a final decision on whether to move forward with the purchase or not?
Yes. So, it's six months plus thirty days if necessary, so potentially seven, because I think we could probably get that due diligence knocked out fairly quickly unless there is a problem with the property and we might want to, I, I would say that, you know, it will come to council much quicker than that six months after the due diligence.
So, similar, maybe to the last, the Robinson property where we did due diligence, we found out some things about it, and we ended up, another opportunity came up, and so we decided to back off that and pursue other options. Similar case with this, if we find out we don't, it doesn't fit for us, the council at that time could decide to back off of this purchase and pursue other options.
Yes, exactly. And we have plenty of time to really scrutinize the property if we need to.
So, tonight would not be a final?
Correct. It would have, we would, you know, regardless of whether, you know, we got glowing reports or we got negative reports, we do intend on bringing this back to council before we pull the trigger and go forward with closing.
Okay.
The property.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Tortorella?
Oh, it shocks, Councilman Schiller and Holman already asked my question, so. City manager, what, besides the $525,000, what other financial exposures do we have as a city?
On this particular venture, that would be the extent of it until council made future decisions on how they wanted to proceed going forward. And those could include things like your partnership with potential developers with solid track records in this arena.
Okay. Well, that's it for now. I also want to wish the mayor happy birthday too, since I've got the floor. Happy birthday.
Thank you, sir.
That's it for now.
Councilmember Pica?
My questions were addressed as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray?
Yeah. I didn't hear it answered, and maybe it was in another presentation, I'm not sure. But with Plan A, what was the projected number of units for affordable housing?
Yes, so, that's pretty preliminary. I think in terms, that would again depend on how we structure our application for the tax credit financing. Obviously, with these, I think with these types of developments, the more units, the more attractive your application for the financing is. So, the more credits we could, or the more units we could get, the better. I don't have a specific number, but I will say that, you know, the previous PUD on the property had a seventy-five unit, it was, you know, it was supposed to be used for a seventy-five unit or bed assisted living facility, so it could be similar to that, if not more.
And then with Plan B, what number do you think we would start out with roughly?
Well, in, in my understanding, again, I, I really would like to defer to Lisa, but she's not here. I think because if, you know, depending, it wouldn't be necessarily all at once that we would get the funding, like the tax credit, so it may be the case that we have to do it in phases. And so, we might have to do twenty-five here, twenty-five there. Again, I can't lock down on the specific number, but it just really depends on your developer and also, you know, because if your developer isn't in the, you know, isn't experienced building a huge five-story development, then they're probably not going to be comfortable building a five-story development. Keep in mind that, you know, if it's, I think we're trying to gear this towards more one-bedroom units, because that's the need in the community. So, we may be able to get a lot more units in a smaller footprint, because we're focusing on one-bedroom units, which has, you know, lesser footprint. So, that's a non-answer, I understand, but I hope that gives you a little bit of, like a little bit of understanding on what we're projecting, and the goal is the more units, the better for our application.
Yes, so it sounds like Plan A would let us build it all out at once.
Correct.
So, okay. Thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council. Hold on, Evan, wait till you get called.
Just a second. We have to go in a certain order, so the first speaker is John Scammyhorn.
Good evening. I am Dr. John Scammyhorn, a retired chemical engineer. I have lived in Ward One for forty-one years. The primary function of government is to protect its citizens, both from one another and from outside attack. Protection includes persons and property. This has to be the first thing we take care of as municipal government before other needs. It is not the place of municipal government to provide subsidized housing. Rents will always seem high, and we will never satisfy once. The city should concentrate resources on things like underfunded police and fire, stormwater, bridges, sewage, and other infrastructure. I am sympathetic to the difficulty of recruiting police officers, partially because of high housing costs, but I think a better answer to that is to increase police salaries. Providing affordable housing is potentially a deep well which could cripple the ability of the city to maintain much-needed services. Setting the precedent of purchasing land at lower rents is dangerous. Ongoing obligation could ultimately result in property tax increases, which could hobble the ability of taxpayers like me to pay their own rent or mortgage payments. I understand and appreciate the arguments in favor of purchasing this land. But once we start down the path of subsidizing housing, it would be easy to find ourselves in a quicksand of ongoing requests whenever residents would like lower rent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next, next speaker is Kevin Tobar, or Tabar.
I want to look at this council and say, thank you for bringing this up. Can you not hear me?
Yeah, I want you to do it.
Oh, Marguerite Larson, Ward Six. So, there you go. Okay, so, thank you, thank you, thank you for considering affordable housing, which is absolutely needed in this community, has brought forward several times how housing has been increasing, and so I just want to thank you all for doing this and passing it. The end. But I do have one question. So, when the rent is coming in, who actually receives the rent? Is the rent going back to the city, or is the rent going back to the builder, or how, how is that rent being collected? And then my other question is on the affordable housing. Is there a way that a tenant, if they want to purchase, do they have the availability or the ability to purchase their own residence? And what else? Oh, wait, yeah, I got, I got one more. I got one more. And then, once the building is paid for, does it belong to the city? Does it go back to the city as their property? So, those are my questions, but please pass this. Please, 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 please. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alex Lampier.
Lampier, Ward Two. I just want to say that I'm in favor of this. Inflation's bad, rents are going up, everybody's suffering. Those people are your neighbors. From previous council meetings, I've heard that we're nine thousand units shy. I think that's what I've heard. So, this is just a drop in the bucket. And from what I've heard from Councilmember Holman, time and time again, nonprofits aren't doing this work, religious organizations aren't doing this work, corporations aren't doing this work, so I think it's time for the city to do the work. So, please, vote yes. Thank you for voting yes on the carport thing earlier too. I appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
And Evan?
Done, Ward Seven. I think this is a great proposal. I think it's going to give us the opportunity to implement some permaculture ideas, or at least influence the developers and spread that message. And I want to associate myself with everything that Alex just said.
From council? Councilmember Liam?
I just want to agree with one of the speakers out there, and I do not think that this is the job or the purview of municipal government. I know that everybody wants to gripe or disagree. That is my opinion. That is a lot of people's opinion, especially in this area.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I do think, to me, the city government's job has a lot to do with infrastructure, as mentioned, and there's a lot of different types of infrastructure. Housing is one of them, and it's maybe the most prominent piece of infrastructure that you can visually see when you drive through a city, is houses and apartments. And we design our streets and all of our infrastructure to service those, that, those housing and apartments. So, I do think it is in the purview of the city government to address this type of issue when it's needed, and I do think it's needed in Norman. And as we saw with an item earlier on the agenda, we have a very good project, I think, that's going to add housing for a different sector of our community, but at the same time, it is removing existing affordable housing that we have. And so, I think pursuing this to see if this property would work or not, and having six months to do that, up to six months to do that, and then being able to come back to the council for a final decision at that time when we know more information, I think is a good thing. And again, we'd be using federal, a mix of, a mix of funding that is not from our general fund, not from our local tax dollars, and is in large part specifically for this very use only. So, it can't be used for police salaries or police cars. It can only be used for affordable housing. So, if it's not this piece of property, then it would be some other affordable housing endeavor that we'd be pursuing. So, I think it's, it's worthy of our time to consider. It is a need in our city, and we don't have to make a final decision tonight about this piece of property. And so, I would encourage my colleagues to support this tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Liam?
This does not have to be spent on affordable housing. We have set it aside for the ARPA money for affordable housing, but we can reallocate that at any time. There's many uses that this could be used for. We have bridges falling down. We have bridges falling down, we're trying to get millions of dollars in bridge bonds, and we could spend $5 million and get started on infrastructure right away.
Councilmember, which one? Councilmember Grant?
Oh, I can do that together for sure. Mr. City Manager, can those ARPA funds be spent on bridges?
I will look to Mr. Francisco. I think we had some road projects we had early on identified as hopeful recipients of ARPA funding.
Oh, I'm sorry, home, I'm not really talking about.
Home, yeah, home ARPA, it's affordable housing.
Can we make the distinction? Thank you.
Could be used for home-related projects.
Thank you. I will be supporting this tonight because I do know we have 9,000 units that are out there, plus the, however many we just voted to get rid of tonight with that other project. And I do know that it's going to take a while to even get a guesstimated 75 units online or even 25, so I hope we don't delay on making some progress here tonight.
Councilmember Schiller.
I was trying to jump the gun earlier. So I would just kind of like to point out that our responsibility as a city, as a municipal government, is to take care of the health, safety, and wellness of our residents. I believe that shelter would qualify under health, safety, and wellness, and shelter is what we are trying to provide here in an affordable capacity for residents that need it. I would like to also just make sure that we make the point that this is one-time money that has been set aside for projects like this, and thank you for Councilmember Grant to highlight that some of these home ARPA dollars are specifically designed and cannot be spent on anything else other than affordable housing. This provides a very unique opportunity to take a, the biggest chunk out of those beds that we are deficient in affordable housing and units, that we've probably would never have another opportunity to do something like this, to provide 75 units for individuals in our community. And I don't take that very, very lightly. So yes, we're talking about student housing, again, on this one end, right? But we have to talk about other individuals that are not students, that, you know, and just to clarify too, this is about individuals that you could consider the working poor, right? People that are contributing to our community, are working, are paying taxes, but they fall within that, under that median level of income that provides that 30% of their income should not go, more than 30% of their income should not go to their housing or to their rent. So let's keep in clarification, like who we're talking about here. These are people that potentially, if we don't have units for them, are right on the edge of becoming homeless, or becoming kicked out of their housing. So it's really important for us to make sure that we're prioritizing this type of housing in our community. And finally, again, as many have stated, and I've tried to address earlier, this is not the first time this contract or potentially this project will come before council. There is going to be a lengthy process to figure out the contracts, potential RFPs, who will be managing, who will not be, who the developer that we will partner with. We will have to rezone this, so this will become, coming before our planning commission, this will come back to council as a zoning application. And just to clarify, this is currently zoned as a multifamily area. So it has a putt on it right now that was zoned for a multifamily senior development, so this is not a different use than what has already been proposed and approved for this specific site. So it's not like we are upgrading this, I guess, the density in this area, this is what is something that has already been planned. So for all of those reasons, I am completely supportive of this, and I hope my fellow councilmembers will join me.
Councilmember Tortorella.
I see it a little differently myself. We had this discussion many, many times over the last couple of weeks. I see this like base housing. You know, the reason why we have base housing is to help the junior enlisted have a place to stay when they're in the military. It's based solely on the fact that they just don't make enough money to live off the base. And so they live on base, it's usually provided for free. Now that base housing is privatized, they do get a basic housing allowance to play, to pay to live there, but I see this as no difference. The home ARPA funds can only be used for these purposes only. We can't use them for anything else, but look at what I'm seeing, what the incentives are for the city, I consider this part of infrastructure. I mean, look, we can provide preference to, to the police, to teachers, the city employees who work here and serve the city. I don't see a reason why our city employees should have to live in Noble, Newcastle, Moore to serve the city of Norman. Now, I know that some people might disagree, but again, this is a specific use of home ARPA funds which can't be used for any other purposes here. The purposes is not, we're not asking for a homeless shelter, we're asking for affordable housing, and this is something that I think we could all support and get behind. We do have seven months altogether of due diligence to ask questions, to make sure, with all the questions that were asked tonight and answered, the homeownership, who gets it, what happens once it's paid back and so forth here, but we can't have that conversation until after we buy it, okay? And at the end of the day, if we can't come to a consensus or agree on anything, I mean, heck, we're buying this for $2.45 a square foot, that's a deal in today, and if anything, we can always flip it and make a profit and go look at someplace else if this does not pass after the seven months. I think we need to take a step back and look at the potential advantages of having infrastructure, we're going to attract businesses and have the SEC come and look at Norman seriously here, and Hitachi, what about the employees? They can actually live near where they work. We have to have some sort of infrastructure like this going forward to make Norman more a pleasant place to be. And I don't, I disagree with the fact that, that we might be importing poverty or anything like that, this is not an argument on that. I just want to make sure that when we have those discussions on how the government should spend its money, local government, I got to remind you guys, it's nonpartisan, so we have to look at everybody and all their needs at the same time and not try to pick sides based on ideology because that makes no sense. I mean, we're up here to look at everybody, left, right, middle, poor, rich, whatever. It does benefit the city, and we have spent the ARPA funds for a lot of good in the city. 9.5 to the Emergency Operations Center, 1.7 to United Way to help COVID-distressed businesses here. We have done that, and I don't see this being a problem specifically if the money is used and can only be used for this type of project. So I will be voting yes too as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Lynn?
Real quick, I feel that it's almost improper that we're voting on this without some Ward One representation right now. This is going into Ward One, they should probably have somebody up here that has a say of the people that we vote on this because us eight people vote in this. If you want to put it on this Ward One, they should probably have a voice up here before we do this because there's a lot of people that might not agree with it. That's just my opinion. And at that, I would make a motion to table this until we have somebody sitting in that chair.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
No.
Motion does not carry.
I did make a statement at the last study session that we don't have a Ward One representative here, and I'm not sure, I mean, Ms. Catherine, I mean, is that going to be an issue tonight not to have representation for a project that's actually going in Ward One tonight?
It's not a requirement for council to take action that every seat be filled or that a seat from a particular ward is filled. Our requirements under the charter are that we get at least five votes for anything to pass, and it's not Ward specific.
Thank you.
I just want to, for the record, note that the previous, current elected, recently vacated, but the previous three Ward One councilmembers have told me they would support this project or this, this pursuit, and that I do think that Ward One will have a representative by the time this comes up for a final decision. So I would agree, I wouldn't want, if it was going to be vacated for a long period of time, I wouldn't want to necessarily go forward, but I think that seat will be filled by then, and that's the feedback that I've received from the previous three Ward One councilmembers. Thanks.
The motion on the floor is to approve the contract. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Votes have been cast, and the motion passes by a vote of five to two, voting against Councilmember Lynn and Mayor Heikala.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anybody signed up for miscellaneous comments?
We do. We have one person, Evan.
This is not, Evan, I'm going to read my little statement before you start. Opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to the Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussions during the miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less.
Test, test. Okay, awesome. Firstly, Mr. Mayor, let me say thank you to you in Chinese, it's a Sheng Ru Kuai Le.
Thank you.
I lived there for a year and a half, 10 years ago. My name is Evan Dunn. I live at 1400 Garfield Avenue in Ward Seven, and I want to, I want you to understand me. I want you to know what it is that, that I'm trying to achieve with my persistent commitment to permaculture, to this Uthrones system. I see people every day who are posturally privileged, genetically privileged, but are not balanced, and because of how much we use our phones, because of driving, because of our feet being forward, I think that not only is it having an impact on our young people, it's accelerating the decline of every other member of our community. And the notion of aligning your body such that your mind can be aligned, there is a compatibility and a synergistic relationship there that we're beginning to get more research that supports breath work. Wim Hof has become extremely popular in the podcast circuit. He uses a breathing exercise every morning where you inhale completely and then you exhale, just like a dam breaking. I'll demonstrate. Sometimes you exhale through your nose, sometimes you let it come out of your mouth. You do that about 30 times, and then on your last exhale, you abstain from taking any air in. What this is doing is it's changing your hormones, it's activating the pituitary gland to produce epinephrine and to activate the chemo receptors, which improves your performance. If you can posturally realign such that you can be relaxed in class, such that you can be relaxed when you're hearing a presentation, that's an improvement in just 1%, 2% in your capacity to take in new information, and to synthesize it in such a way that you're capable of using gestures, coordinating that with your exhalations, that's forming a more perfect union with gravity. It's working on us 24 hours a day. We don't think about it because it's invisible. We don't think about the air that we breathe because it's invisible. There's a power there, and that's what we're working towards. I invite everyone to email me, evan@uthrones.com. I will build you those Uthrones in the back corner there. Try them, money.
Thank you, Evan.
I want you to have that experience. Thank you.
Anybody else signed up? Nobody else has signed up? Thank you, council. We are adjourned.